Waycross presents an election forum for member of council for the city of Forest Park. There are five candidates running for four open seats. The candidates are in alphabetical order Trevina Adams, Rosalyn Moore, Chelsea Ness Clark, Terrence A. Harrison, Matthew Robinson.
Welcome to this Waycross Election Forum. This forum is for Forest Park City Council. I'm Dana Gagnon, Government Programming Coordinator for Waycross Community Media. And we have three candidates here in the studio. We have Terrence Harrison, we have Rosalyn Moore, and we have Chelsea Ness Clark. Thank you so much for coming to the studio today.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Matthew Robinson and Trevina Adams were both invited to participate. They did not respond. Now, we're going to start with your two-minute opening statements. But before we do that, I would like to just take a moment to let the viewers know that if you are watching this program live on October 6th, you can be part of the program. You can email your questions for the candidates to me here in the studio, and I will get them here on my magical device, and I can ask the candidates your questions for you. So if you are watching this program live on October 6th, the email address is live@waycross.org. Now, here are the rules for questions. You must be a Forest Park resident to ask a question. So when you send me your email, please include your name and your Forest Park street. Now, I'm not going to say your last name or your street address on the air. It's just how we make sure that the questions for Forest Park candidates are coming from actual Forest Park residents. Questions must be phrased for all the candidates, not targeted at just one candidate. So, that being said, let's get started with our two-minute opening statements. And Mr. Harrison, let's start with you.
Thank you, Dana. Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Terrence A. Harrison, and I've lived in Forest Park since 1978. And I am a proud recipient, or excuse me, a proud graduate of the Green Hills Forest Park School District. In fact, I graduated from Forest Park High School in 1989. I'm an individual who believes that the city of Forest Park is an inviting, diverse, progressive community, and that a strong personal leader will continue to make our city a destination for those who desire a safe place to raise a family. So what drives me is a sense of community, and I currently sit on a board called, excuse me, of an organization called Education Matters, which is located in Lower Price Hill. And that organization serves those residents of Lower Price Hill and beyond, for those who are looking to attain their GED, or just looking for help, just to help them in their economic situation. I'm a proud member of Cap Alpha Society Fraternity Incorporated. I also am a life member of the VFW, Veterans of Foreign Wars. And I have been in Army Reserves for over 32 years, and I currently still serve. Professionally, I work as the Veterans Programs and Services Manager at the University of Cincinnati. I have both a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in criminal justice. My bachelor's is from Northern Kentucky University, and my master's is from the University of Cincinnati. And I also have a certificate in higher education leadership from the University of Cincinnati. So that's Terrence A. Harrison in a nutshell. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Dr. Moore, we are going to reset our timer, and now we're ready for your opening statement.
Thank you, Dana. Good evening. I'm Dr. Rosalyn Moore, and I've been a resident of Forest Park for 27 years. Currently, I serve as second vice mayor for the city of Forest Park. I am a visionary leader. I'm a retired major in United States Army with 21 years of service to my country and 25 years of service to the residents of Forest Park. I take great pride in my partnership with our school district, our faith-based community, our businesses and residents. I'm a proud member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. As a visionary leader, I'm advocating to position Forest Park for 2030 and 2050 and beyond. This includes innovation, mobility of our residents and our seniors. It involves economic growth, improving quality of life, social determinants of health, to make Forest Park a great place to play, work, and live. I'm proud of our community. Based on our 2020 census, we are now the second-largest city in Hamilton County. We have 20,189 residents. That's a 14% increase since our last census in 2010. We are growing, Forest Park, with new families, so we need to advocate for improvement in our infrastructure, our community spaces, mobility throughout our community, and outside our borders. Street repairs, entertainment to keep residents in Forest Park. I take great pride with my commitment and my time and my dedication to the residents of the city of Forest Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Ms. Clark, are you ready for your two-minute opening statement?
I am, thank you. Thank you so much, Dana, and Waycross Media for having this forum. My name is Chelsea Ness Clark. I'm the current councilwoman on the city of Forest Park. Also, I've been a resident here for almost 13 years. I am a business owner of a STEM lab because there was not enough access for minorities and girls for high-quality science, tech, engineering, and math education. So that work has transcended amongst many communities throughout Hamilton County. I'm a single mother of two teenagers, and I am a precinct executive as well. I grew up in a very strong UAW family, and so those values and the grit and the perseverance, I hold those to this day, and that is the reason for the advocacy that I've done in helping break down barriers for Ohio families, and particularly families here. I'm the only candidate endorsed by the Hamilton County Democratic Party, as well as the Cincinnati Women's Political Caucus. And why is that? That is because I'm not just a visionary leader, but I have proven I can leverage partnerships throughout the county to get things done. As the vice chair of the Economic Development Commission, I've started our city's minority business initiative to make sure that we've got an infrastructure so that those businesses have the tools they need to get ahead, like the new Hamilton County Regional Library. In collaboration with so many partners, we've been able to get that off the ground, and now we will have our new regional library to help with quality of life. When the pandemic hit, our city was in need, and so I sprung into action and created partnerships with our faith, community, and restaurants, and partnered with the Free Store Food Bank to feed over 2,400 people from May through August. If you want representation that's responsive, that has a passion for civic leadership and a business acumen in order to leverage those countywide partnerships irrespective of the board that they're in, then I'm certainly your candidate and would be honored to serve this city some more.
Thank you so much. Well, now that you have heard everyone's two-minute opening statement, now is a great time, if you are watching this live on October 6th, to send in your questions for the candidates. You can email them to me right here in the studio, live@waycross.org, and I'll get them right here, and I can ask the candidates your questions. In the meantime, though, I want to start with a question of my own. I'm going to start with Dr. Moore this time, and we'll have two minutes for this question, too. And I would like to know what you think are the top three issues that are facing Forest Park right now? I know we hear a lot of different things at the meetings, so boil it down to what you feel the top three are.
So I think the top three issues that our residents are concerned with are taxes, and that's something that we're looking at. The other topic is quality of life. We are currently, council is looking at a quality-of-life committee to address some of those concerns. I think the other thing that are concerned about the community space, a common space, and I have been advocating for that. Councilwoman Ness mentioned the library. I was very instrumental in starting the conversation with the library and connecting partnerships. And so as a result of that, we're going to get a state-of-the-art 25,000-feet library in our community. And that took a lot of advocating, a lot of connecting resources, and educating them on the city of Cincinnati and our residents as they deserve new buildings, new spaces, new commonplaces to come together. So I think that kind of helps with that concern that the residents need a common space to come together. And I'm very proud of my team, who really worked hard to bring that library to our community. And that was a vision that I had as I was traveling to other communities, and I said Forest Park deserves a library, and I'm just so happy and proud. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to pause. If viewers are wondering if that two minutes wrapped up really fast, I held up the wrong cue card for the candidates. I have cue cards. You're not seeing them, but just now you have a little behind-the-scenes peek here. So what I'm going to do is, that cut one more minute. You got to give me one. Go ahead if you want to take another minute to answer that, and then you'll all actually have two minutes to answer this question.
Going back to quality of life, we have an initiative called We Thrive with the Hamilton Public Health Department, and that started several years ago where our Assistant Chief, Jermaine Hill, and our Chief, Afie Jones, they have a vision of making Forest Park healthier. And as a liaison for council, I take great pride in providing service, doing blood pressure screenings. We wrote a grant for $15,000, and that jump-started that. We also met with Interact for Health. They gave us another $25,000. So getting out in the community and partnering with other services to bring services to our community. And We Thrive is doing great things in our community. They're real respected. We have community partners, and it's just improving the quality of life in our community, and that was one of my platforms when I ran four years ago. As a psychiatric nurse practitioner and a public health nurse, I feel that healthcare is instrumental in making sure that our community is healthy and thriving, and so I'm very proud of that initiative and all the time and the commitment that I have put towards being a part of that team, the We Thrive team, and we've made a lot of great progress for our community.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize for that, breaking that up. So, I've got the cards in the right order for you now. And go ahead, and I'll ask the question again because it's been so long now. What do you think the top three issues facing Forest Park today are?
Thank you so much. So, yes, taxes continue to be somewhat of a main topic. And one way that we have to, you know, kind of position ourselves as we are continuing to try to make determinations on how we can go about its reduction, is making sure that we do have a lot of quality-of-life opportunities for our residents. I'm the only one on council that has two young children, and as a single parent, you know, we really rely on a lot of our services and our community spaces. So when it came about that the library was going to embark on a project that was countywide, that went to a vote, of course, and it got approved. And so we were all too excited to get on board and help that collaboration and start that ideation process and brainstorming. And what we did was say, hey, these are the things that our community needs, specifically when it comes to our students. I'm an educator. I own an education company. Making sure that we've got extraordinarily strong and clear pathways so that when our students are graduating high school, they don't have to leave. We are growing, but we're growing, you know, a little bit underneath what we really should. Forest Park is an absolute gem of the city. We're positioned amazing geographically. And so that would be the third prong, is making sure that we've got some very structured pathways for our students. And that'll also bleed into, of course, economic development and what that looks like for our business communities, and making sure that the corridors and entryways we have to Forest Park are really resembling the beauty and the vision that we see in the coming years.
Okay, great, thank you. And as I get this ready for you, what would you say, Mr. Harrison, are the top three issues?
Thank you, Dana. For me, I'm going to take a different path. So, in speaking with some of our residents, just by walking around the neighborhood and asking them, like, hey, what do you want to see in your city, and what do you expect out of your council? One of the things I heard most was public safety, which really caught my ear since I was a criminal justice major. And really, my goal is to be working with our public safety because I think we have a very good public safety crew in Forest Park, police, fire, first responders, and whatnot. And just walking some of our neighborhoods, I talked to a constituent, and she was saying, like, maybe having, like, a walkabout, walkway down Southland Boulevard, just south of Sharon Road, streetlights, right, on Kristen Place. Just little things like that, just so our residents feel safe. Not to say that Forest Park is not a safe city. I think it's a very safe city, and I think our police department's done a very good job in keeping the crime down. We had a constituent saying that, hey, maybe more of a police presence in her neighborhood down by the D section. Second would be economic development. We keep hearing about taxes, and I've lived here just about all my life, and if we can spur more economic improvements in this city, I think with our proximity to 275, and plus we're on the bus line to number 20, for businesses looking to start or expand a business, I think Forest Park would be an awesome place to have your business here. And finally, quality of life. Growing up here, I can remember a time where they had parades, not just for homecoming, but maybe to start off the Little League season. Some of our constituents talked about, like, hey, maybe a park or a community center or whatnot. So I would hope that we can get those issues brought to the table and show our residents, like, hey, we heard your cries, we heard your pleas, we're making, we're going to make things happen.
That's great, thank you. Okay, well, let's go on. I am going to remind, if you're watching live on October 6th, you can email me questions in the studio. I will get them right here. I can ask the candidates. That's live@waycross.org if you want to email. That works on October 6th. Now, let's, and we're going to start with you, Ms. Clark. So we will, our next question will also do two minutes. I want to ask all of you, what is unique about each of your skills and experience that you bring to this council? Because, of course, everyone has a different background and the different skills, and that's what makes such a broadly skilled council. And we'll start with you. There we go.
Thank you so much. That's an excellent question, one that we usually don't get, so very much appreciated. So my background, I graduated from Miami University, studied business and political science there, got my bachelor's, came here, and then operated as a financial analyst for about seven years, so handling, you know, investment vehicles, retirement assets, et cetera, mutual funds. And then I went on to Mendoza College of Business through Notre Dame, their business college, and received my executive certification in business and econ. So I bring a lot of those business skills. So a lot of times, the lens that I'm looking through things are similar in fashion. As a business owner, I look at what does, what's the input coming in and what is the expected output? I know that if we want to have an infrastructure that really propels us further into the 21st century, I know that that's going to be dependent on what relationships we have with our school district and how we can best support them with resources and the existing workforce community that we have. So those things are very much important, as well as being able to have a lot of interpersonal communication skills. So throughout the county, and also the trustee on sorta, and the suburbs consortium board, and those things, having those conversations throughout the county helped to make, to create partnerships and collaboration. I had a meeting earlier today with local 265 union, so trying to bring them back to Forest Park to really create a vibrant infrastructure for our young people that are leaving high school, that don't, that may not want to go into a university but can get excellent careers in trades. Those things are extremely valuable, and they help position your city so that you're not being left behind, but that you are right where you're supposed to be and getting the resources that you need. And a lot of times, since we're on the verge of Hamilton County, we don't always get those things.
Excellent, and that's exactly your time. Thank you. Let us set this, and go ahead, and now your turn.
Thank you. I think what I bring to the table is maybe more so of a global view. In my travels with the military, I've been to several different countries, serving the United States Army and the people of the United States in countries including Ecuador, Panama, Germany, Cameroon, West Africa, Kuwait, and Iraq. So in dealing with citizens of those countries and being a representative of the United States, I'm trying to bring something to them that they may not have seen, that, you know, they might have seen or heard something on TV or radio, what paints us as, okay, all Americans act like this, or whatnot, whereas, you know, that was further from the truth. So the experiences I bring there, I can bring here to the city of Forest Park because, as I said before, Forest Park is a very inviting, diverse community. I have neighbors from Senegal. I have neighbors from Guatemala and Mexico. We have businesses from individuals who live in Bhutan or, you know, places like that near India. So I would think that I could bring a global point of view to this council. Second, I also believe, too, that in my current employer, I do work with individuals in the political realm, okay? So, and I don't care what side of the aisle they identify as Democrat, Republican, or independent. I work with them because we all have a common goal. And I'd like to bring that, too, here, not only for the residents of Forest Park, but even in county and state government. So like, hey, how can we work together for the betterment of our residents? Thank you.
And Dr. Moore?
Thank you. Mr. Harrison, thank you for your service to our country.
Thank you.
Terrence and I both served in the Army together, so we have a certain skill set that we've been taught over our career. And so together, I think we have about 55 years of service to our country. So thank you again for your service. So being, saying that, accountability, dependability, strategic planning, being an officer in the military, we plan for missions, and so we have to have a strategic vision. Also, I graduated from the University of Cincinnati with a bachelor's in nursing. I went on and got my master's in nursing from Grand Canyon University, and then I got my doctorate in nursing from Xavier University, Cincinnati, Ohio, in population leadership. And so I bring a skill set of being able to coordinate, thank you, being able to coordinate. I bring that global view, as Mr. Harrison said. Working for my, I also work for a local university and a local health department. And so traveling the world for my profession has given me a global view as well, embracing diversity. I also do a lot of partnership with Forest Chapel, who has a diverse population. And so just making sure that the residents are welcome to our community, they're a part of our community, and they're engaged in our community. And so that's what I kind of bring, that skill set. And I also like to see the big picture, and as I mentioned before, I am a visionary leader. And so I'm just very, very excited how we're positioned in the county, being the second-largest city. And so I look forward to the candidates honoring me at the polls and getting me re-elected.
Excellent. Well, thank you. So we've done a few kind of overarching, introductory, who are you kind of questions. I want to change direction a little bit. One of the things that's already come up is economic development, bringing businesses to Forest Park, keeping businesses in Forest Park. So I will ask, and we will start with Mr. Harrison this time, and I will make this a three-minute, because I know it's hard to get an answer in sometimes, question. And what I want to ask is, what can Forest Park do to keep businesses? But I'll say that if there's things you already are doing, some of you are already on the council, then you can address that, too. So we will start with you, and what can Forest Park do to keep businesses?
Thank you very much. I believe, and I'm speaking for self, it's just really just highlighting the attractiveness of Forest Park. And it's like, okay, why not Forest Park? You know, we pick other communities to start businesses, raise families, and whatnot, but really selling Forest Park and what, you know, we bring to the table. As I said earlier, based on our proximity to 275, I think Forest Park has a way, is easy, you know, entrance and egress to get to and from the interstate. But really just positioning those businesses probably on the bus line for those who have, you know, vehicle challenges, right? If they don't have a vehicle to get to work, maybe the bus can bring them to work. And also, too, working with these existing businesses, like, hey, you know, what can we do? You know, how can we help you spur growth? What do you need from us as council members? What do you need from us as citizens to patronize your business? Or what do we need to help grow your business? So really, I'm thinking that really just promoting Forest Park and what we have to bring to the table, and where we're located, right? There's several neighborhoods that we're close by, but really just using our access to 275 to really sell the, you know, to our business owners or existing businesses, like, hey, this is where you want to be.
Yes. Dr. Moore, what would you do to keep businesses in Forest Park?
Thank you. Some of the things that we're doing currently is incentives for businesses to grow. A lot of times, our businesses come into Forest Park, they're small, family-owned, and so just giving them incentives to continue to grow and to stay in our community. Also, reaching outside our borders, you know, looking at global companies, enticing them to come to our community, educating them on how diverse our community is. Also, looking at how we use our land. We're kind of landlocked in our community, and so we have to think differently. So we have to build up because we don't have the space to build out. So looking at mixed-use properties, like apartments on the top, maybe retail at the bottom, so different ways of bringing businesses and more families into our community.
Sure. And Ms. Ness Clark?
Thank you. So I'm the vice chair of our Economic Development Commission and have been since, actually prior to me being elected initially to city council, because I do believe that economic development is really where it is in terms of helping your city and its positioning be vibrant and be competitive. So with us being the second-largest city now, that didn't just happen overnight. It took some time, and it took some work. One thing that we've been able to do is that library. We are talking about a $10 million next-gen, building a new next-gen facility. Just that facility and its infrastructure alone creates jobs, and it expands our space and quality of life for our families. The city, in order to get such a deal like that to go through, we also had to look at how do we utilize the existing land that we have in order to complement what they're doing so that it will entice them. So what we did was, is we were able to create a land swap deal for that project to go through. You have to be a really visionary leader in order to get those things done, to make sure that you can support those efforts and make it so that your businesses that want to expand or are considering our city, that you've got, you know, that you've got packages that look inviting to them and that you're going to grow with them and that you're making a commitment to them. We've been reinvesting in what's called Ready. Ready has served us very well. We are seeing more businesses come into Forest Park. We've been able to retain over $20 million in business, and that's not to mention all the folks that that's keeping. You're talking over 5,000 jobs that we're being able to retain because of the work that the Economic Development Commission has done. You look at Kroger, through Phillips Edison, we had to push that thing to get through so that we could get that area revitalized. Northland Development, we were able to make that happen, and then the Promenade. And that really brings me down to minority business development. Forest Park is extremely unique. We've got over 31 languages spoken in our school district alone. We are very diverse, the most diverse, and so I saw a need for there to be a platform that was completely equitable and inclusive for our minority women and veteran-owned companies. And so launched that initiative, and we've been able to bring mortar, which has been not only nationally recognized, but been able to dump or invest over $20,000 in the work in education and resources and capital for our business owners here. And that's just the beginning. I envision a tech hub for young minorities. I envision entrepreneurship startups, and we could be the leader in greater Cincinnati because of our geographic location. These things and much more can happen, but it does require those supports and understanding how that fits into the, you know, into our overall work here in Forest Park.
Great, thank you very much. And actually, while we are talking about economic development, I think a lot of the residents that are watching can picture what the city has been doing on Northland Boulevard.
Yes.
You can visually see a difference from what that looked like just a few years ago. You can visually see a difference from what that looked like just a few years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what would be your suggestion for the next target space? Uh, we've seen it happen in Northland, so we're excited about it now. Um, so as far as looking at the whole area of Forest Park, um this time, we are going to start with Dr. Moore. Uh, where would you put, uh, this, uh, this, uh, honestly, I think a one-minute question. Where would you put this next?
So, um, we, we recently discussed Northland, but we just purchased the property, property right next to the post office, so that property belongs to us, so um we're excited about that purchase. Also, looking at the OK marks off of um Hamilton Avenue, that's a wonderful space. Uh, and so those are the two areas that um we um could um spark economic growth in our community, and so, yeah, so we're excited about that purchase, and we're hoping that um, um, we're still having conversations about that, how it's going to be developed. But that was a big, that was a big purchase for our community.
That's exciting. It's all exciting, that's why I figure, I ask, where would you, you know, if, if you're, when you're making these decisions? Um, Ms. Nuss Clark?
Absolutely. Um, so a lot of, um, a lot of these wonderful things happen, um not just by, um, you know, through council, of course, but also in the direction and leadership of our city manager. Um, so when Mayor Johnson had myself um and councilman at the time, Wendell Burns, lead the, the search, um, which was a national search for our new city manager, what we really, really wanted collectively was someone that was going to be aggressive, dogged, and very passionate about community development and wanting to go after things. Um, the space over on Hamilton is especially nice. You've got a lot of green space, so what we need is, we need a extended development for um, for um, uh, single-family homes that would be one-story, um, that would be accommodating elderly people, and it needs to be a more walkable commu- community, so having um not only park space, but also having restaurants and small eateries and things, making it a little bit more outdoor, um, and walkable would be, would be a great vision for that, for that uh entryway.
Yeah. And Mr. Harrison, where would you like to see it?
Uh, thank you very much. Yeah, the space on Hamilton and Waycross is a, you know, very beautiful, attractive space, yes. I'm that old to remember when the Kmart was there and it was very viable and
Yes.
and very busy. Um, but that's just one. Um, you also have, uh, I can envision um different spaces in the Promenade. Um, I, I know there's just a handful of businesses left, and once again, as I said earlier, just with the proximity to two seventy-five, plus it's on the bus line, where you could put some type of small startup business there, you could put some type of restaurant or um a craft brewery or something like that in that type of space, because what are we trying to do to attract people? What are we trying to do to attract families to Forest Park? And if we think outside the box, those might be the keys to bring those families in.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you. Now let's, we do a few more questions, but before I go any further, I do want to take a brief moment and uh let the viewers know, if you are tuning in on October sixth while we're doing this program live, you can actually be part of the program, and you can send me in your question for the candidates. I have an iPad right here in the studio, which means I'll get your question right here, and I can ask them the question, so you will be ready to cast your vote. Um, the email to do that, if it is October sixth, is live@waycross.org, and then you can be part of this program too. Um, now, my next question, we are going to start with Ms. Nuss Clark, and I wanted to, uh, we've, you know, we've talked about the census already. Um, Forest Park went from being the third-biggest city in the county to the second. That's exciting. Um, so that kind of answers a little of this question, means some of this might, might be happening already, but um how can the city continue to attract families? Because that's something that, we talked about attracting businesses, but that's only part of the demographics. So uh, this will be a two-minute question, and I will start with you.
Well, thank you. Uh, we have talked about this new regional branch library, I know, um, but the reason we talk about that is because what it does. So let me tell you a little bit about what it's going to have in it. Uh, we are going to have STEM, which is my favorite, and maker space, um, space where kids can have hands-on um opportunities, a space where community folks can gather and meet. Um, we are going to have it bleed into outdoor space, so um there's different types of exercise and things that are going to be able to happen there. But the reason that I'm especially um proud and excited about that work that we've been able to accomplish with that partnership is because I believe that um through, through the work that we're doing in economic development and the grants that we are seeking, we are going to be able to leverage and create multiple public-private partnerships for that space. The space that we're talking about is adjacent to the current library, so that open space where the activity center used to be. We are going to be able to expand, and we are going to be able to truly have a hub that is community-centered, um, and that is going to be a huge draw um for families coming to our city. Um, also making sure that we've got, you know, we've got a lot of parks as it is. We've got beautiful outdoor spaces, and it'd be great. We just bought a stage, and so we do need to be able to have, you know, more concerts on the green, so to speak, and, and outdoor opportunities and offerings that last the entire summer, that are free, that parents and families can um can experience and enjoy. Uh, we also um have our energy electric aggregation that, that we passed, and I'm really happy about, about that as well, because that is lowering, um, you know, lowering those bills for our residents going into that, um, going into that grouping. So between those two things, um, that is where we're going to see a lot of this pool. We've got a little bit of a marketing challenge as well, and so one of the things we need to do is set that strategy very, very clear, and then create a marketing campaign so that we are drawing and bringing people to Forest Park, and they know exactly what they're going to get and where we're headed.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, now we are going to come to this end of the table, and it is your chance to answer the same question.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Um, really to bring families in, I, I, I go back to my experience in the military, and I think diversity is the key. Um, one of the great things about growing, my, growing up in Forest Park um in nineteen-seventies and eighties, about how diverse it was before diversity was even a word. And really, even speaking with some of my classmates, um, thirty-plus years later, when we were in school, we look at that, and, and it's hard to explain to people like how everything wa- everything was so inclusive. Everything was so, I'd say right down the middle, but really, people learned how to get along despite our differences. And really, if we can highlight that, and this is for all families, um, you know, based on um average family dyna- dynamics are, we want them to know, like, hey, you can raise a family in Forest Park. Working with our school district, we have two beautiful new schools that we're attracting people to. I haven't taken a tour yet. Uh, my son's in, at the south building, but still, I like to say, like, we got two brand-new beautiful buildings that, like, hey, you know, we're on our way up, right? And then al- al- also too, to um bring our families, it's just really just a small thing, just quality of life thing, right? So just speaking with, with the gentleman, he said, like, you know, how come we can't have a dog waste station at the end of our streets, right? Because he's starting to see more and more people walking their dogs, walking their families. So once again, if a stranger were to come to Forest Park and just see what they have, they might be inclined to move out here. So that's what I would like to champion and highlight on bringing families to Forest Park and keeping them in Forest Park.
Excellent, thank you. And Dr. Moore, what would you do to bring families to Forest Park?
I think the main thing is we're looking at things that entice families and individuals and businesses to come to Forest Park, and you have to look at social determinants of health. And so that's a, a terminology that we use to look at the community big picture. That includes economic stability, employment, income, okay? Uh, it includes neighborhoods and physical environment, housing, transportation, parks, playgrounds, walkability. We're also looking at education, literacy, language, early childhood, vocational training, and higher education. That's why the library was um so important, um, that initiative, starting that conversation, bringing the community partners, bringing council in later, um, to uh push the initiative. And that's what I did as a visionary leader. I knew how important a library, a brand-new library, um, will im- impact the, the residents of our community. Also, food insecurities. Um, We Thrive is very instrumental in doing pop-ups. We've been doing it for the last almost four years because we saw a need for access to um, um, food insecurities. Also, looking at community and safety, looking at social integration. Um, since, um, being on council, we are really pushing for a common space for our residents, be it a multicultural center, be it a recreation center, and so that's very important for community engagement and for families who want to come into our community. Also, we're looking at violence and tra- uh, trauma. We're looking at policing and social justice. And finally, my passion is healthcare, giving our residents access to healthcare, and we've been having conversations with different partners to bring those providers into our community, because families need access to ca- healthcare, and that would improve their quality of life and basically um put Forest Park in a position, um, uh, it's a stretch, but um right now, we're the second-largest city in Hamilton County, but we want to grow. Um, but we want to uh make sure that our residents are happy, residents are, retain our residents here in the Forest Park.
Well, thank you. Okay, I'm getting this timer all ready for our next question, hence all those little beeps you can hear. Um, we're, while we're talking about families, um, I want to bring up something. I hear, I've heard at a couple meetings lately, council meetings, families come and say, is there something for youth?
Mm-hmm.
And, and this is kind of tied into what we talked about in the last question. Um, but what I'd love for you to answer with is, um, kind of two parts. What do you already see right now in Forest Park for youth? Um, and what do you want to see, what do you want to make happen in Forest Park for youth? Uh, we were kind of talking the bigger picture of families in a broader sense, but specifically s- the stuff for the kids, whether they're elementary kids or teenagers. Um, and we are going to start with Mr. Harrison this time.
Uh, thank you. So currently, uh, for our youth, all I see is um kids on the basketball courts or down off Sharon Road, maybe they're playing basketball or tennis or, or whatnot. Um, I see kids riding their bikes in the neighborhood. Um, then sometimes too, I see a lot of kids, a lot of idle time on their hands, and I'm not saying that they're out there causing any havoc or mischief or anything like that, but what I would like to see really would be a community space like it's been spoken of before, where these kids can congregate, where there can be somewhere where there's some oversight, um, where they can learn something, like it was, as I said before, like maybe a trade, maybe a skill, uh, maybe a new hobby, right? Um, things that we used to have when I was coming up. Um, maybe a pool, right? You know, just kids like to swim, my son likes to swim, but you have to take him outside of Forest Park to go swimming. Um, and, uh, you know, growing up, one thing we don't want, like I said, we do not want young people with a lot of idle time on their hands, right? Because bad things might, could happen, and I'm not saying that they're bad kids or anything like that, but really, we just want to get ahead of the curve and just provide those youth with something to do. Uh, we talked about concerts earlier, you know, maybe have a youth concert, right? Um, or you can, you know, you get, you know, some type of uh local artist to come and perform. Um, but just really, just have some type of event that's geared towards our youth from ages maybe seven to seventeen, but really just to show them, like, hey, we're not that far removed from you, and we do care about what you, um, about your concerns. Thank you.
Dr. Moore, what would you say to someone asking about what family events are there now, what youth things are there now, and what youth things do you want to see come next?
Okay. So, um, we have several programs. Of course, COVID has put a, uh, a damper on some of our programs, but we have soccer, um, we have football, um, well, we have a um organization that provides a feeder system to our high school and our junior high. Um, we have baseball, we have basketball here in Forest Park. Um, we, um, also, uh, we have, um, our annual harvest fest, which is actually coming up October the thirtieth, and so that's a space for our, our young, um, uh, residents to come out and um, uh, engage in the community. Um, we also, um, our parking rec, um, actually, they're meeting today, um, um, implementing more programs. Um, I know volunteerism is very important, and so we're always looking for volunteers um to initiate programs. Um, like I said, being a resident here for twenty-seven years, um, looking at um a brotherhood program that I implemented several years ago, looking at sisterhood programs that were implemented, and so we do need volunteers to kind of spearhead these programs. We also have Girl Scouts that we partner with, We Thrive, and so Girl Scouts are actively um recruiting um, uh, for the Girl Scouts. Also, We Thrive, um, We Thrive, we encourage, um, youths to come out for fitness, and we partner with the Wooden Wood School District for a lot of our, our programming. Um, so do we need more programming? Yes. Um, and so I think that's something that we need to um work on, getting um more um improvement uh in that area. Also, um, the library, um, one of the things when, um, looking at the library, the maker space, that was, that was instrumental in um getting that maker space into our community to um have, uh, our students have access to technology so they can be innovative. Um, and so, um, um, those are just some of the things that we have already, but we do need more and more activities for our youth, and especially our teenagers, who are, who's a very large population in our community. Also, partner with Forest Chapel, now they have a um, a vision, uh, vi- uh, village mentorship program, and I sit on their board, and so that should be rolling out in the next month for um, uh, children, um, s- uh, sixth grade and under. Um, so, um, um, they're also looking for mentors as well, and so just partner with our faith-based community to provide um programming for our, our, uh, young adults.
Excellent, and I, I didn't give a time limit for this one.
Okay, thanks.
So I'll make sure we, we all have, keeping track over here. Um, Ms. Nuss Clark, what would, how would you answer that question?
Uh, thank you so much. I'm pretty much, um, as Dr. Moore aforementioned with the existing programming that we have. Um, the problem is, is that we've got a somewhat of a marketing challenge, because we've got some programs um for ages K through eight, but people aren't, people aren't understanding that that's what we have, or rather, people don't know that. So this is really a marketing issue. This is about making sure, how are we actually communicating with our, um, with our residents? We've just entered the space of, of social media. I mean, that's just recently done. So we have got to look at how we build our infrastructure and our communication so that people understand, hey, this is a plethora of different opportunities that you have that are very affordable and a lot of times free for our residents, but you can partake in that. So that's one of the things that we need to um certainly work on and invest. Um, but we also even have the police cadet program. Uh, our police officers in our department has a wonderful um organization that brings in those, brings in those young folks and helps get them ready, um, for hopefully a career in law enforcement, and that has been very successful. Um, we also see the, a like situation when it comes to our um fire and EMS. They have program and apprenticeships as well. Um, so I would love to see very intentional community space where certain things can happen, um, be those um large gatherings for youth and teenagers, um, maybe those are concerts or, um, or technology things or technology hubs, um, robotics coding, STEM-based things, that'd be great. Um, and, but a lot of this is going to also require working with and creating exi- um, amping up existing partnerships, but also creating new partnerships, whether they're faith-based communities, community or not, because we've got plenty of businesses here in this city that have know-how and have skills that can lend themselves to doing all sorts of very interesting and unique um things when it comes to our youth and having them available, or even sponsoring those concerts that, for families. So that's one thing that we need to work with. Um, I know that my company partnered with, um, Wooden Woods and the PTA doing STEM nights, and we did Build It With Dad nights, and um, those things are really special, and I sa- I'm sure that, uh, once COVID alleviates or moves on, we can get back to doing a whole lot more of that.
I think we could say that about a lot of things.
Yes.
Uh, everything on our list, and we just will be so glad when we stop having questions that are impacted with a but-for-COVID answer. Um, I want to make sure, we're, we're coming down towards the end. Um, I actually have a lot more questions that I want to ask, but um, I'm going to stop because I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to give me a two-minute closing statement. Um, so we are going to start with Dr. Moore, and um, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say that, um, it's been a privilege of to serve, uh, privilege serving our community for the past four years. Um, I take great pride in our community and, 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 um, in positioning us to progress um in the future, um, whether that be being active with the school district. I have a wonderful partnership with the school district. Um, I'm a trusted leader with the district. I have a um commitment to the faith-based community, uh, and businesses, and so I'm just trying to um rebrand our community, um, while on council, that is something that I'm always advocating for, rebranding our community, because currently we are the second-largest. I know we keep drilling that, but that- because currently we are the second-largest. I know we keep drilling that, but that is, that's a very, uh, good position for our, our community. Um, and so communication is important. Um, been advocating for, um, different ways to communicate to our residents. And so it would be an honor, um, if I was, um, re-elected. Uh, I am also an endorsed candidate for, um, the Hamilton County Democratic Party and I take great pride in that endorsement. And, um, thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much. Okay, Ms., I'm going to press this to start you and go ahead and you can give me your closing.
Oh, thank you so much. Um, we are celebrating sixty years, the city of Forest Park. We were the first planned community and I am extremely proud of, um, of this community. We, you know, when, um, years ago, thirteen years ago, when we were looking at where to live and, and there were all sorts of options. And I got so tired of seeing houses, uh, on the other side of the, the highway. And, uh, I really, really wanted to live here. It was an intentional decision because I knew there was so much more to this city than what other people, you know, especially outside of this city, really know. Si- Forest Park is a gem. Um, we have a tr- we have a walkable community. We have a place where you are safe. We have a, um, school district that really works hard to make sure that they're integrating, um, and that they are, you know, working with us in the community, in the city, and helping to strengthen the lives and the quality of life for our residents. Um, it's really important to be in a place like that, almost like a place where everybody knows your name. With that being said, we are also at a precipice. We are at a place where the decisions we make now are going to dictate the next twenty years and our vibrancy. So how the mall, Cincinnati Mills Mall, is going to be redeveloped and making sure that we are extremely intentional about what that looks like as an advantage to our city. And then the other pockets and entryways and arteries is going to be extremely important. I've taken great pride in, um, you know, being able to serve, uh, the citizens of Forest Park. I appreciate it. I love them and I'm extremely responsive and I work extremely hard. Um, as the only candidate endorsed by Hamilton County, um, Democratic Party, as well as the, um, Cincinnati Women's Caucus, they look at the ability to get things done and they look at how you're engaging with your community. And they've given their mark of approval, as I do hope the residents of Forest Park will continue to do for another four years.
And very quickly to make sure we get yours in, I want to go ahead and hear yours.
Thank you very much. Uh, first I'd like to say it's an honor and privilege to be here. And also too, um, I am going in as a write-in candidate, but I want you to remember too, that as a son of Forest Park, that I am committed to the residents of Forest Park. When it came time for me to buy a house, I stayed in Forest Park. Um, I chose to raise a family in Forest Park. My kids are, um, one's a graduate of Wittenwoods High School. My son, he's in sixth grade at Wittenwoods, um, uh, primary school, whatnot. So as somebody who's lived in Forest Park for over thirty-eight years, I would just like to say that I am committed. Uh, I would be hard-working just and, and based on my, my rec- my track record and my resume, I am committed, right? I've been in Army Reserve for over thirty-two years. I've been at my job for over six. And it's just really, I plan on staying until the job gets done. I'd love to see, uh, one day where, you know, where, where we have a waiting list for people who want to move to Forest Park. Why? Because of all the great things that could be done. And not to say that those things aren't happening, but those things are happening now. But really, I would just welcome your vote. I would just welcome your time. If you see me on the streets, let's talk about it. Let's see what, um, we bring to the table. So once this election is said and done, we can put these, these, um, things into place. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you so much. I want to thank each of you for joining me this evening. And I want to thank you for watching as well. That means you're going to be an informed voter when you go to the polls on November second. If you need more information before you vote in the upcoming election, you can watch all of our election forum programs at www.waycross.tv. And you can also go to the Board of Elections website to make sure you are registered, to look at a sample ballot and to find out where your voting location is. That's votehamiltoncountyohio.gov. Registration for this election ended October fourth. Early voting has already begun. Make sure you mark November second on your calendar. Don't forget to vote. I'm Dana Gagnon, Waycross Government Programming Coordinator, and I will see you at the polls November second.